For the record.
Okay.
Mayor Mendez.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan.
Present.
Commissioner Gowen.
Mayor Mendez.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Golanski Pizano.
Here.
Commissioner Tetra.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mungia. Commissioner Nees.
I'm here.
Okay, we do have a call in progress. I have a call in progress, but notice of the public meeting. It is now 5:02 PM.
Is the call to order?
Yes. Notice of the public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville teleconference opening. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville will conduct the regular meeting on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 5:00 PM via webex teleconference meeting. The meeting number is 966-490-472. The first item on the agenda is the roll call. We do have everyone present for the Commissioner Mungia at this time. We will now have the invocation by Pastor Bradford.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for all you've done for us. For those of us that are healthy, we thank you for that. For those of our people who need healing, we ask you to bring healing. Father God, we ask you to heal them spiritually, emotionally, physically, in every way. And Lord God, we ask you to remind all of us to be the encouragement that each of these people need. Lord, we ask you to remind us to make those phone calls, send out those text messages, and be encouraging to those who cannot get out. Help us to remember to bring food and other things that the people need that cannot get out. And Lord God, we ask you to lead and guide our president and the coronavirus task force, our Congress, and every level of leadership, our governor, our county judge. And here in this meeting today, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor, our city commissioners, and everyone that presents anything. We ask you for the very best for the City of Brownsville, for the health and prosperity of our city. And we ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short time of, a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has been spoken. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
At this time, we'll go, next agenda item is the public commentary. Mayor, no one signed up for the public commentary, so we'll continue on to the next agenda item, which is the work sessions. The first work session that we have is the COVID-19 update by the Public Health Department.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. This is Dr. Art Rodriguez, Public Health Director and Michelle Jones, Epidemiologist. Tonight, we will be presenting the COVID-19 drive-through testing site running totals. And we will also be doing an update on some epidemiological curve that we've been working on. The drive-through, we've had 1,258 tests administered thus far. This goes from day one, 1,602 people who submitted to the portal that did not meet criteria. Today, the running total for insured is 56%, and 44% for the uninsured. The drive-through has reported 72 positive samples and 1,125 negative results. In queue, right now, we have 117 results pending. Yesterday, the drive-through on day 19, April 20th, reported 56 people tested. It's significant because we had 50 people scheduled, and we actually did 56. It's also significant because on that day, we did a conversion from spudum to swabbing. In addition, today, we do have the 117 results pending. Yesterday, we had no positives reported by the laboratory, and 56 negative were reported by the laboratory. I'll go on to the next slide. And I'll introduce Ms. Jones, who will report the confirmed cases, deaths, and estimated recovery in Texas first.
All right, so we, as soon as Texas began experiencing cases, we began tracking those just to see where we were epidemiologically on that curve. We've all heard the phrase flatten the curve. So that's what we wanted to do, is we wanted to start monitoring that as soon as it happened. And Texas is such a large state that we want to have the ability to kind of look at that wave. I believe currently, right now, we're about a week and a half, two weeks behind some of the larger cities. So that kind of gives us a barometer of where we are and how we're performing with these mitigation strategies. So if you would, go to the next slide. All right, and now this is the epidemiological curve of Brownsville. And granted, like I said, we're almost about approximately two weeks behind. But if you notice that we are flattening out a little quicker, I did do some analysis on the week per week. And our first week and Texas's first week of completed data, we were lockstep. And as we started these mitigation strategies, you'll notice that we started flattening, and we're actually performing a little better than the state as a whole is in flattening out that curve. So what we can glean from that is that our strategies are working. We're not seeing the increase in cases. Currently, right now, we're looking at averaging about five additional cases a day, which is a really good number to be at. And that means we're not overwhelming those healthcare systems. We're not overwhelming the hospitals, our doctors, or nurses. They're able to keep up with what is coming through. And the strategies that we have implemented are doing what we have intended them to do. And so this can be used as a policy decision-making tool to see how we want to proceed in the future. Keep in mind, though, that anytime we do lapse in some of our mitigation strategies, we'll keep an eye on it and keep monitoring, but you might see increases in the cases. So we need to kind of determine how flat we want the curve to be, or if there's any wiggle room. Because whatever we implement now, we end up seeing the results two weeks later. And that's what the two epidemiological curves are showing you, is just how we're stacking up with Texas as a whole. And we're actually doing really well when it comes down to it. We're performing a little better, which is what we like to see. And I'll go ahead and pass the call on to Dr. Rodriguez.
Lastly, I want to add that mitigation and containment are two public health strategies. And as we reach 99 cases in Brownsville, we continue to work on mitigation strategies. And it's important to note, just in three days, we've been able to do outreach on over 1,000 homes in the District 1 area, handing out flyers and also putting vehicles in the area to message what it is that people can do to access both drive-throughs, what it is that people can do about reaching out to their healthcare providers. And then just kind of trying to communicate the current efforts that the City of Brownsville is doing in conjunctions with our communications department. So we do want to thank all of our community partners, the university, the private businesses, the doctors. On our hospital call today, it was important to note that the hospitals are already looking proactively at what they're going to do when we reach the peak of the curve, and we switch over to looking at IgG and IgM serology type testing. So we continue to explore the future, the next steps of where the City Public Health Department needs to work to be able to take us to beyond the peak of our cases and into the next phase of potentially building herd immunity out in the community. Any questions?
So I have a comment. So thank you so much for the great graphs, and I agree, we're doing great. But I always want to caution again and remind people, we are not testing everyone in the City of Brownsville. These people that are represented in these graphs had to qualify with enough symptoms to be tested. So for instance, if you go to the hospital because you are sick, either hospital, and you have classic COVID symptoms, but you do not meet the criteria for admission to the hospital, you will not be tested because of the shortage of testing that still exists. So there are sick people out there with COVID that are not represented on these graphs unless we are able to test more. And so it's our hope, and we spoke today about trying to reach those people that are being turned away from the hospital because they're not sick enough to meet criteria for admission, and move them to one of the two city testing sites so we can capture that data. So when you see the curve flattening, it's great news, but it's not an absolute number. It's only, not even an average. It's a gauge, and it's the only gauge we have. But it only becomes more accurate and more reliable as we test more people.
I do want to follow up on what Dr. Gowen said. And I will state that less than 1% of the total population in Brownsville has actually been tested. And what I'm looking at, Dr. Rodriguez, correct me if I'm wrong, but of the individuals that have been tested through the city, we're looking at a 5.7% positive rate. If we kind of extrapolate that out over the general population, you know, we really have to consider and be realizing that we probably have a couple thousand people at least in the city that are infected if we look at the numbers and based on our population. So we continue to caution everybody to take precautions, stay at home if possible, and realize that even if you don't have any symptoms, you could still be positive. So be very cautious of that and be considerate of others in the general public. And the City Commission is conscious of what's going on in the community as far as the testing and the symptoms and the medical aspect of this. So we're doing our best, based on our resources, to try and get as many people tested as possible. I think we've probably tested about twice as many people as the county has. So I really want to thank the rest of the Commission for approving this initiative and allocating the funding for covering those uninsured individuals that could not afford the drive-through testing. You know, 1,258 people so far, that's fantastic. And we just want, we just want people to know that the testing continues to be available. So please consider filling out a questionnaire through btxcares.com. And let's get as many people tested as possible. We're seeing that if we're going to reopen this country and our county, access to testing is going to be very important, not just now, but in the future as we continue to move forward. Thanks.
I have a question. Our second line there, not the blue one, the other one, is that the recovery line?
Estimated.
Estimated.
Yeah.
That's an estimated recovery rate, and it's based on a very crude method of knowing that if you don't report a death and you have an incidence of cases that have been confirmed, you're assuming that after two weeks, they have recovered.
Once we get into where we're seeing a higher hospitalization rates, those right there, according with the DSHS, we would alter our formula then to include a 20% hospitalization rate and then use the other 80% at a 14-day recovery. So the 20% hospitalization averages out to be about 31 days in the hospital before they recover. And then for those that aren't seeking hospitalization, the recovery rate is averaged out at about 14. It's a crude method, but right now, that's the best that we have at this particular moment in time.
And the blue one indicates that we have about 90 confirmed cases here?
We have 99 now.
Okay, okay.
As of this morning.
Thank you.
So my next question and concern, and this is for Dr. Rodriguez. Is there any way that we can better inform or be more transparent or just include the public closer with us in the data that we're finding without violating any HIPAA laws, without, you know, intruding and showing exactly which homes have COVID cases? Is there any way that we're able to put something together to show people maybe hotspots in the city where this is occurring? And another concern that I have, that I've been seeing in the trends, that kind of throws me off, and it makes me feel like the public might not be seeing what we're seeing, is when it's broken down, it'll say "community-acquired," fine, right? But then we're seeing a lot of them that have linked to other cases, you know? And it's, you know, 12 of them in one day, up to almost. And so I just really want to be transparent with the public and let them know that we are seeing a person get infected and transmit it to everybody in their home and, you know, relatives that they've dropped off groceries for, things like that. Just to be more transparent with the public and seeing how rapidly the infection is able to spread to other family members. And then my last concern, well, one, if there was just a way that we could show the public mainly where we're having these hotspots and what areas of town. And I just really want to thank the City of Brownsville for putting all of this information together because it's very important that the public knows that our mitigation strategies are being effective, but that there are people out there that have COVID and we could be interacting with. And my last request from the city would be that in these updates, that we could include maybe somebody from BISD, maybe somebody from PUB, whatnot, to just have a more streamlined process to the public of information, what kind of assistance is out there, where, you know, where the food banks are, things like that. I know a lot of it is on btxcares.com, but I just really want to make sure the public knows that it's not us trying to help them, or no, it is all of us in this together. And we all have to pull our weight when it comes to this.
So I hear three questions. The first question, we're working with the UT Health System to build what's called Vulnerability Index Scale. And that kind of answers your question in the reverse, on the flip side. By knowing which populations are most at risk based on known diabetic or overweight or obesity, it helps us to home in on those parts of the community. If people are sheltered in place, it kind of evens out the incidence rate of people acquiring it. But it segues into the next part of the question. So people most at risk are people who have those risk factors. The next part of this is the way the cases are being reported by the county, whether it's a community occurrence, or community-acquired, or linked to a previous investigation, or part of travel. If you look at those numbers, we've had about an even breakdown of travel. And the next presentation I make, I will break those down to show that we actually have a travel and link to previous clusters coming out. Those tell a story that the contact tracing that the county is doing is able to catch individuals who are positive after they go through the contact tracing process. So the community-acquired numbers, however they keep increasing, it's important to note that the mitigation efforts that we're doing are working because usually you see the community cases take off and the travel kind of tapers. And even your tracing index kind of gets lost just because of the large number of cases that start to pop up in the community. What we can show here is that you've actually had all three numbers kind of trending. And that actually goes to show the mitigation strategies that are in place are having an effect. I think that the last question you asked me was about the known areas and the hotspots. I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to kind of help me with that here.
Yeah, so we actually do have, we're actually mapping that as an internal document when we're doing our targeted outreach campaigns. So we do have that data available. Now, what we have discussed is, we do have the map that is on the COV website. And through my contacts with the University of Washington, A&amp;M, UT, and DSHS, we kind of came up with a, not necessarily a formula, but when is it all right for us to break it down even further? So what the goal is, is once we get to a particular case count, let's say a particular district, like a District 1, gets enough cases, then we can break that district apart and then spread it out, almost like the bubbles that kind of bounce and break apart as they grow. So Alvaro from Enterprise and I have actually already discussed that. And as we start growing in our cases, we do plan on busting the districts apart as they get enough cases. That way, we're still HIPAA compliant, but we can get a better, our citizens can have a better idea of what kind of areas are developing a little more rapidly. But we do have the hotspot mapping as an internal document. So when we do do those outreach campaigns, we're targeting those areas that are having a hotspot to make sure the surrounding individuals, or let's say the markets, or what have you, are in compliance and that they know what is going on and that there are testing facilities out there that we can go ahead and get them tested and identify more quickly. We can also identify areas where we're not seeing cases and where we're not seeing testing. And that could be just a lack of knowledge of how to get there, what the process is. And so we actually go out in that area also and provide them with some of the information on phone numbers, locations, give them a little bit of information on the process so that those areas that aren't testing have the resources available to get to the testing site and so we can better identify them also. So we're kind of trying to attack it from two ends with our hotspot mapping.
Okay, thank you. And that was my question. I just want to make sure that the public is aware, you know, oh, I live in a hotspot, my mom lives in a hotspot, things like that. So the public can better, you know, just be more informed and not feel like, oh, we have insurance. You know, we're all in this together, and they should know what we know.
And Commissioner, I want to add, for example, one point. If we get a cluster like the county reports, and that cluster is made up of a household, and the household maybe had six to nine cases test positive, and at Verney, we may be exposing that cluster site just because it has a high enough number and it pinpoints too close to that neighborhood or that house. So we're balancing the public health protection and then not trying to add a specific household and put them up on a GPS map.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tetra, like Michelle said, the main COV website, the main page actually has a color-coded map to show how many cases are in each area. So you can refer people to that for now. And Dr. Rodriguez, this graph we're seeing in front of us right now with confirmed cases and estimated recovery, can we put that on the page as well?
Absolutely, we'll put it up.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, for the record, Commissioner Mungia joined during the meeting at 5:11, so he's on the call.
Hi, Art, this is, I have a question. Do we know what the general insured rate? You know, the percentage of people that have health insurance?
Commissioner, I heard part of the question, could you ask?
Do we know how many people don't have health insurance, what percentage?
Yes, let me go, can you go back two slides? This is...
My point is, I know it shows that it's broken out 56, 44. But I have a feeling that we have a much higher uninsured population, just in general. And more than likely, the people that are uninsured aren't getting tested and aren't getting the treatment that they probably need. So that's just a research a little bit further.
And to answer your question, we do go back to the census tract that shows the numbers for Brownsville, for the numbers of uninsured and the percentage rate. So you are correct. This demographic that we're presenting to you tonight does not match up to what the U.S. Census Bureau reports for people not having insurance in this community.
And John, the cohort data indicates the uninsured is as high as 70%.
Thank you, Art.
And I would just also ask that when the time is right for the antibody testing and all of that, that we continue to, I would encourage the Commission to continue making sure that the city covers those costs to make sure that we, I really, really, really worry about those people who don't have insurance. I get so many inboxes from people who have symptoms. And just like Commissioner Cowan said, they're afraid to come forward because they're afraid of costs. And the next question is, if I have COVID, how am I going to pay for my hospital bill or treatment? And I just really want to make sure that we're covering those people because we know that there's a lot of them in our city. And it really concerns me that people still don't know that the drive-through is free if you don't have insurance.
Very well. The next person, I have no more questions, will be Ms. Odi Leon with Emergency Management. Odi?
She might be on mute.
No worries. Mayor, if I get a text, I will send this to the city's secretaries.
That's fine. I see that she is signed on as a participant. We just don't know if she's on, so I don't have any idea whether or not she can hear us. But okay, thanks for it.
She can't hear you. She did say that she's trying to speak, but for some reason, we're not hearing the audio.
Okay.
Okay. City Secretary, we can come back if fixed, otherwise, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
You? This is funny. So then, at this point, is it still very manageable to track whoever's positive, to track who they're having contact with, or backtrack and see who they may have exposed to the virus?
Commissioner Golanski, that is one of the roles that is part of the contact tracing done by the County Health Department. And yes, part of the interview process includes the individual who tests positive given a contact history within the last X number of days. So it is part of the initial investigation done by the county.
Training more people to do that in case there was an upsurge of people that they needed to keep track of?
So the University of Texas Health, Dr. McCormick, has actually been working with the County Health Department. And Dr. Belinda Reiniger recently reported that they're trying to get some of the local students to be able to aid the county in this endeavor to be part of the contact, be part of, be contract, contact tracing. Thank you.
And Norah, Commissioner Golanski, the other thing that they're doing is they are calling their, remember that the School of Public Health has a cohort of over 5,000 people. And so they, with their own staff, are calling as many of those people as they can to ask, are you sick? Do you know to go out and to get tested and so forth? Because to try and uncover more about what is the true number of illness as opposed to just the number that get tested. So there's a lot of outreach work going on.
Dr. Rodriguez, I want to suggest something. This is kind of different, but I'm not sure if you've thought of this or not, but you may want to pitch this idea with UTRGV as well. If we do a robocall, we can obviously do a whole lot of calls within a concentrated period of time. So if we were to do a robocall off a list, could we do a robocall maybe just asking individuals whether they have certain symptoms on that call? And if we do have that capability, that may give us an idea as to who's tracking symptoms, where those symptoms are, who those individuals are. Then maybe that could be a follow-up call to those individuals so that we can look at maybe getting tests.
So the technology is there. I will reach out to UTRGV. A robocall is good because it queues people to be thinking about certain symptoms. While they're not going to get an answer on the phone, it's certainly going to queue the individual on the phone saying, are you currently experiencing a sore throat, a fever, and so forth and so forth?
Yeah, exactly.
You answer, yes, then you say, then you need to call one of these numbers. So I certainly will follow up with the university system and, because they do have some of those softwares available.
Okay, yeah, I was going to suggest doing it through UTRGV since they already have that database as well. But if, for some reason, we can't do it through them, we can do it probably as a city. But I think if we do that, we can probably reach a massive amount of people in a short period of time.
Also recommend that if you do the robocall, the first thing you do is to differentiate people that are at risk. Commissioner Tetra, you need to take your phone off of mute.
Got it. I don't know how much of any of that you've heard. Just to remind you that when we do the robocall... Just to remind you that when we do the robocall, to make sure that that we differentiate that it's us, we're not charging any money and that people understand it's not a scam. Because I have gotten so many texts and phone calls from people trying to throw me in jail if I don't pay my light bill and all kinds of weird stuff. So just to make sure the public is aware that it's us trying to inform them and get them tested and not a scam.
We understand and we agree with your point. Thank you.
Priscilla, can you hear me?
What is that you?
Yes. Yes, can you? Okay. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. For a quick update on emergency management, our emergency operations center is still operating virtually. And on an update on reimbursement, we are seeking into three grants. The first one is the PA DR 4485, which is a FEMA reimbursement. We're also looking into the coronavirus, coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program for fiscal year 2020. That's a CESF grant, which is open for cities and counties. And we're also looking at the BJA CSF direct allocation, which the City of Brownsville has already been allocated $110,000. And that is for first responders. Those are the three grants that we're seeking for reimbursement appetite. And if any other grant might become available, we will continue reaching out to the state for other grant opportunities. Any questions? Did y'all hear me?
Yes.
We heard you, Odi. Thank you. The only question I have for you is, are you getting any sleep?
Yes, I am, sir. Believe it or not, I am. I am. Thank you so much.
Of course, thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Odi.
Okay, we'll continue on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda items.
Now, any motions? Move to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number one, consideration and action to approve the third amended declaration of local disaster, of local state disaster for public health emergency.
Mayor and City Council, we have amended the local measures to the third amendment. Mayor, do you want me to just read off what we have changed from the last second amended?
Yes, that's the easiest way to do it so that we don't we don't spend a whole lot of time going through things we've already approved. So if you would, Ms. Ramirez, please just go over the items that will be changing.
Right. And this is to be, some of these items is to be consistent with the governor's orders. Starting at 12:01 a.m. on Friday, April 24, 2020, all retail services not otherwise designated as essential services will be allowed to reopen, reopen services, provided that they can conduct services through pickup, mail, delivery, or doorstep delivery in strict compliance with the terms required by the Texas Department of State Health Services. The DSHS requirements may be found at www.dshs.texas.gov/coronavirus. Customers may purchase items from a retail location for pickup, delivery by mail, or delivery to the customer's doorstep, but may not enter the premises. Next, as ordered by the executive order of the Governor of the State of Texas, all medical, surgical, and dental procedures that are not medically necessary to diagnose or correct serious medical conditions are determined by the patient's physician shall be postponed unless the procedure can be performed in accordance with the commonly acceptable standard of clinical practice without depleting the the hospital capacity or the personal protective equipment needed to cope with the COVID-19 disaster response. In addition, procedures can be performed in licensed health facilities that have certified to the Texas Health and Human Commission that they will reserve 25% of the hospital capacity to treat the full range severity of COVID-19 patients and that it will not request any personal protective equipment from any federal, state, or local public source during this COVID-19 disaster. Next, schools shall be temporarily closed to in-person classroom attendance by students during the pendency of this declaration or until specifically reopened by the Governor of the State of Texas. Nothing herein shall be construed to prevent a school from distributing meals, conducting remote classes or online classes, and carrying out administrative duties. Schools shall be defined as all K through 12 campuses, trade schools, vocational schools, colleges, or universities, not otherwise designated by the State of Texas as a state agency, state agent, or state contractor providing governmental services. Next, employees of childcare centers, adult daycare centers, nursing facilities, plasma centers, and medical facilities slash hospitals shall not work at more than one center facility hospital. Next, all city parks are reopened for engaging in physical activities, provided that use of park amenities such as playground sets, fitness equipment, restrooms, and other equipment will continue to be closed for public use in order to minimize the transmission of COVID-19. Next, facial coverings. Example, bandana sewn cloth face covering, T-shirt face covering are required for all individuals over the age of five in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. For example, department stores, grocery stores, and pharmacies, especially in significant areas of significant community-based transmission. The cloth face coverings recommended are not surgical masks nor N95 respirators. Those are critical supplies that should continue to be reserved for healthcare providers and other medical first responders as recommended by current CDC guidance. That's all. Thank you.
And the other change is that this will remain in effect until May the 5th of 2020.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I ask a question? So nothing changed about it being a class C and that only citations could be issued?
Correct.
That has not changed.
And on the parks, the parks one, that is, more than anything, it's to clarify for the public the way we've been operating. Because the parks have actually been, some have been open, but this item was meant to just clarify how it is that we've been operating. And Mrs. Ramirez, on the on this parks one, as far as playground sets, fitness equipment, those have, how have those been closed off to the public?
There's been signage. The Parks Department has been placed signage on all the playground equipment, identifying that that is not allowed to be used by by our children. However, the trails and trails are open. So mostly signage has been communicated.
But how are, who's monitoring that the playground sets and and restrooms and other equipment like jungle gyms or whatever is not actually being used? How's that monitored?
Well, restrooms are closed, so they're they're physically closed or locked. I don't know if our Parks Director is online and she wants to speak to that, Damaris?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so most of our parks, we have been able to seal off with caution tape and posting signage, but and then restrooms are closed. And then what we'll do with this is we'll remove caution tape to park entrances and then we'll post signs on stakes discussing what is, what amenities are not available and used at your own risk. We cannot guarantee sanitation 100% of the time. And so we'll 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 update our parks that way and our social media pushes as well. We get a lot of questions online, so we've been answering them as they come in.
Mayor, I have an issue with that. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I have an issue with that because you're relying on people actually reading the sign and you're relying on people looking at social media. If you take the caution tape off and allow people inside, I guarantee you, there's going to be people playing on the on that equipment and.
Let me.
Hold on. And then talking about not guaranteeing sanitation kind of worries me. I prefer for it to be closed than for for a statement to be said that you can't guarantee sanitation if somebody goes in there because I'm pretty sure people are going to try and use it. So there you go.
Yeah, we are removing basketball hoops. Well, we will caution tape the structures themselves that are not, plus post signage in English and Spanish. And then we do have site visits. We do have people who go through. Aside from PD, our staff do as well. And then we're, if people are seen in the parks, we educate them. We haven't seen very many. We did have one group come into Olaveta Park yesterday to do practice when they thought that the state parks was a city park, but we just explained it to them. But it's been minimal education to let people know. For the most part, everybody has been complying.
Commissioner Nees?
Yes, I just wanted to encourage Mr. Brunel and Mr. Rometto to put the word out as much as they can, starting tonight and tomorrow, about the reopening businesses so that the retailers were ready to go on Friday morning pursuant to the rules that we're setting down.
In addition to that, Commissioner Nees, I believe the Chamber of Commerce is actively calling many of the main members from 400 members. They've been on the phones with them. So they'll also be a resource for BCIC. And I know the chamber's been reaching out to to many businesses as well.
Excellent.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Nees, we'll proceed with being proactive. Actually, I didn't have an organizational update as part of the COVID report. I felt that there was enough discussion there. But just to give you some some statistics that I was going to share with you all on the communication side in terms of how active they've been, just in the past 17 days, it had 46 projects, 17 livestreams in Facebook, 116 local media interactions, and about 180,000 social media interactions. So just to give you a sense of really what communications has been doing and the intent to keep them stay active on how we're.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments on this? Do we have any motions for approval?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And I would like to point out, in case you get any questions regarding other items that the governor may do between now and the time that our orders expire, there is a catchall provision at the end that talks about about this. If it's in conflict with anything that the governor does, obviously, the governor's orders would would control. So there is a phrase about that at the end, in case you get any questions about. Thanks.
Next agenda item, action item number two, consideration and action to award the Anacua Street and Arango Road pavement, sidewalk driveway, and drainage improvement project to the lowest responsible bidder, total commitment construction in the amount of $2,810,332.75 as budgeted in fiscal year 2020 capital improvement plan and authorize the mayor to execute the construction contract.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioner, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, great. On this particular item, as stated, we received eight bids and it was tabled at the previous meeting just to verify some quantities and pricing on the contract with which our engineering staff has gone ahead and reviewed and spoken with the contractor to make sure that all the pricing, that they'll be able to honor it because we have some concerns on a couple of items. Our staff has, like I said, met with them and gone over the entire bid pretty closely and they feel very comfortable that they can complete this project for the pricing that that was submitted in the bids. Our engineering staff also did some additional calls to other cities that they have performed work for and verified that they that they have performed good quality work and completed the work on time as well as within, you know, their contractual obligations. Also, our legal department completed some additional reviews on the contract confirming that everything on this this contract was ready to go for this commission meeting. With that being said, we're seeking your approval in awarding this contract to total commitment construction in the amount of $2,810,332.75. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those for you.
I do.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Nees?
Yes. So are they a local bidder?
They are not local. They're from far Texas.
Okay, so were there any local bids?
Yes, sir. There was one local bid from GNT Paving and and the other bid was from Los Fresnos Peterson Construction.
Would they, isn't there, is there a 5% flexibility there for local bidding? Were either of them within that 5%?
I think legal can probably respond this better than I can. I know they looked into it.
Okay, is legal on the line? Can can they answer?
Do y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this item was was originally reviewed by Mr. Padilla and we reported to me that he looked at the procurement process and the procurement of this specific question that the Commissioner Nees has and that there weren't any issues. I don't know any specifics as to the percentage having been overlooked. I know they looked at all the qualification and the bid and it was found to be proper procurement by the by the Finance Department.
What is, when Commissioner Nees refers to the 5%, is that something that exists in our procurement process, the council?
Well, yes, normally, like the state of Texas, the city also could favor local companies, although they may not be the lowest bidder. But as in all things that the Finance Department looks at, they don't always just look at the lowest bid, but at other requirements and other prospects of the bidders. And it's those bids that are found to be most qualified and not necessarily the lowest, but they may offer the city the best product. You know, the city always has the option to not necessarily go. My understanding is that this was what was done by the by the Purchasing Department or the Finance Department.
So. Nees, can you line us a little bit more on the 5%?
I think it has, it's under the government code or the local government code that allows for some flexibility there in addition to what Mr. DeCosta is talking about. So my question was whether either of, I don't know if Peterson is considered local because they're right around the corner in Los Fresnos, but GNT Paving, I think, is local. So I'm just wondering if they fit within the 5%. There may have been other reasons why, even if they fit within the 5%, that they weren't awarded the bid. Maybe, you know, past performance or something like that. So.
I know that in the past, we've done it with purchasing vehicles. We would choose Tipton or Tipatech, something local, rather than somebody, you know, further up in the state because it just benefited us to keep the money in the community. But I know that there was very strict, extremely strict rules around that 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 the Purchasing Department had to follow in about. Is the Purchasing Department on the line?
And I think the Purchasing Department may be better be able to answer this question.
I just don't want to do this and then have an issue and these people don't get their street paved because we made a mistake.
So is someone here from purchasing?
5% Commissioner Nees would be 140,000. So this is what, about $70,000 difference?
It's $84,000 difference, $84,376 approximately.
10% under.
Hello, this is Lupita, Finance Director. One of these, one of these items was discussed. It wasn't discussed in in detail, but the 5%, the information is that that's that's an option that the City Commission could could take. But I believe engineering had some. engineering had, uh, some, uh, reservations regarding that and I, I, they would have to further explain, uh, the reason, uh, on this item.
So engineering then, so was any local bidder within 5%? And if they were, you have a reason for not choosing them?
Our, our staff has no reservation on either of the contracts, whether it be total commitment, GNT, or the other responsible bidders that we previewed. Uh, the 5% would be something that's decided not by our department. Uh, we don't have any issues with whichever of the contractors of the two that you're looking at to go with.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get information. So nobody's answered it yet. Were either of them local bidders within the 5% or were there some other reason why they were excluded? If they were?
No.
Nobody has that information in fine.
Uh, ours, our direction is to look for the lowest responsible bidder, which is what we do according to the bid. And the lowest responsible bidder is total commitment construction. Yes, we do have a bidder that's within the 5%. It's approximately, uh, $84,376.85, which is about 3%. If the commission decides to move forward with that, that's, uh, that's your choice.
What was the amount saved if we go with the lowest bidder versus somebody local? What was the amount of, what was the?
$84,000, $376.85.
It's a lot of money.
Okay, so can you tell us who the bidder was that was within the 5%?
The, the lowest bidder's total commitment. The next lowest bidder is GNT paving with a bid of $2,894,709.60.
Do you know if, if, um, total commitment is gonna use workers from Goddard County over in Far? Or they, will they be using local workers?
I don't know. I know that every bit of working person, uh, people that we can right now.
This, this is Lupe, uh, finance director, sure. Under Texas Government Code, section 271, that 9051, does have that provision for the 5% as a local option. Uh, that option could be, uh, be, uh, be, be approved by, through commission action.
Commissioner Neese, just to make, uh, to provide someone a perspective, basically engineering and purchasing, uh, our, our purchasing process is centralized purchasing. The departments don't, uh, they take a more straightforward approach. They just go with the lowest bid. However, uh, in this case, there was the local considered, the local scoring wasn't considered. That is an option that can be invoked at this point. And the commission is asking that we take that approach. We can, we can certainly do that. I think what engineering is basically saying is they took the lowest bidder and if they were responsive, that's who they recommended.
It seems like that's what they were doing exactly. And we have an opportunity to give a local company and their local workers some work. So that's why I'm raising this issue.
Right. And, and that's an option available, uh, as Lupe just outlined within the government code. And again, uh, engineering just kind of went with a more black and white approach. But we certainly have that latitude within the 5%.
And I'm very grateful that this street is finally getting done. We're finally getting something done in District Two. But as you know, I really had to fight for this money for, I can say, over a year for paving. And I love our local, um, vendors. They're great people and I love keeping money in the, um, uh, city, especially now considering the economic hardship that our entire nation is facing. I just think it's a really hard decision to make to save $80,000 that can be used to pave more streets. Uh, we're keeping this money local. So it definitely is.
I think the multiplier of things would benefit the city, uh, more. So I'm gonna make a motion to award the contract to GNT, uh, paving.
We have a motion, uh, to award the contract to GNT paving. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, I, I was gonna ask, okay. Second, uh, any further discussion?
I have one question. Is changing the contractor going to delay the project for any substantial amount of time?
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? Those in favor of GNT paving? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I'll say nay.
Okay, Commissioner Tetra, anybody else? Okay, motion passes for GNT paving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is action item number three, consideration and action to award an agreement for professional engineering and surveying services to Gonzalez Engineering and Surveying Incorporated for the capital improvement project, street reconstruction in District Two in the amount of $200,000, $2850,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, once again. This contract is for design services for streets on Grande Boulevard, Lourdes Boulevard, and 11th and 12th Street. Uh, this, this is in District Two, and this is for design services. This is being awarded to, uh, Gonzalez Engineering and Surveying Services in the amount of $200,850. We're recommending approval on this contract.
Again, I hear the work in District Two. It is greatly appreciated and I will gladly make it approved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Sounds like, was that Commissioner Gallin?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes?
Once again, thank you. You have good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number four, consideration and action to acknowledge the city comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFER for fiscal year ended on September the 30th, 2019.
Uh, okay.
You would please start over.
Very well. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So if you're ready for our presentation, we have, my name's Quentin Anderson. I'm a partner, uh, with Carr, Riggs and Ingram. And, and also on the line, uh, is Zeus Giannis, uh, one of our, one of our engagement supervisors. And we conducted the audit of the city's financial statements from our, from our offices in, in Brownsville. Uh, we worked with your, your finance department and administration to, to, uh, you know, conduct our audit procedures and to assist in the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report. We had the opportunity to, uh, uh, review, uh, this financial information with, uh, with city management and finance and also reviewed the, the information with the Audit and Oversight Committee, uh, last week. And what we've done is prepared a PowerPoint presentation to kind of give you an overview of the information, uh, within the comprehensive, uh, financial report. And so if we'll turn to, uh, the next page, uh, in the slide, okay. Of course, you know, the annual audit is a requirement of, of, of city ordinances and local government code and state and federal regulations because you happen to be the recipient of some significant state and federal awards. And we've conducted the audit in accordance with, with the generally accepted auditing standards to render our opinion that the statements are fairly presented, uh, in accordance with, with what we would refer to as GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, and, and so, uh, within the comprehensive annual financial report, there, there were bound copies delivered, uh, uh, through the finance department, but there's also, I believe, PDF copies that everyone hopefully had an opportunity to review. Uh, but in, uh, in that, in that CAFER, page 19 to 21 is the independent auditor's report. And it will indicate that we've audited the financial statements of, of, of the city. Uh, and it includes the various funds of the city and, and various component units and that, that in our opinion, the financial statements fairly present, uh, in all material respects the financial condition of the city and the results and changes in financial condition over the past fiscal year. So that would be what we would categorize as a non-modified report, a clean opinion on your financial statements, which you would be accustomed to as commissioners and, and as management of the city. A couple of things, or one thing I would point out to, to, uh, and the commissioners, we pointed out to Audit and Oversight Committee, is that the city has been the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, Award Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for over 40 years now. And, and what that means is that, uh, your personnel, finance and management, you know, go above and beyond the minimum requirements for local government financial reporting and your, and your financial statements have received that award, uh, consistently. And so the certificate of achievement, if you had your CAFER, is on page 15. And it, and it, and it does acknowledge that the prior year statements, uh, met the criteria of the GFOA. And it's your, your expectation that the current year report will also, and you have submitted that to the GFOA for review. We'll go to page three of the slides. The, the comprehensive report includes a lot of information. It's broken down into sections. The first part being management's discussion and analysis. It'll have a nice narrative and, and graphical and chart type overview of financial information. And it's very useful in a summary highlight of what's almost a 300-page report. And I encourage you to read management's discussion there and emphasis on the things that cause changes, uh, within the city. There's a basic financial statement. Basic financial statements, uh, include a government-wide statement, which, which I would, you know, in a layman's term classify as consolidated financial statements of the city as a whole. It includes all, all the funds and, and component units, uh, listed in a government-wide, uh, presentation. Then there are fund-level financial statements and the city has, has numerous funds that finance has to account for. And, and you've provided separate statements, uh, on, on each of those funds, each of the major funds and all, all the aggregate funds, uh, that's included in the statement. And the next section would be notes to the financial statement, which gives you detailed information on, uh, uh, some of the more significant, uh, events within the city, description of assets and liabilities and, and, uh, long-term debt and things of that nature. Uh, those notes to the financial statement are fairly comprehensive and, and give you a lot, a lot of information. The, those statements begin on page 45 of the CAFER and continue all, all the way through page 136 where the notes end. So the next chart, if we'll turn, uh, will have kind of a, a running recap of, of the government-wide financial information, uh, that, that's presented in this report. And there are some, some significant, um, historical financials in the back of the, in the statistical section. But what this chart shows is the changes in your net position. And we, we, we've, uh, presented a 15-year history in how net position has changed. And, uh, county principals for, for local governments changed significantly back in 2005 where we began this government-wide presentation. And so when you jump there, you can make a better comparison of net position. But, but what we see in the, in the most recent fiscal years, 2017, 2018, 2019, uh, your net position, uh, in, in particular in the past year grew from 258 million to 269 million. And there were some significant governmental accounting standards implemented, uh, related to pension liabilities and post-employment liabilities, uh, in the periods from 2015 to 2019. And though there's some very detailed financial notes that, that describe each of those changes. So we'll go to the next page of the slides and, and again, a little more discussion about net position. Uh, net position is, is simplistically your assets minus your, your liabilities. Um, I like to think of it as the difference between what you own and what you owe. And, you know, the bigger net position is, the better you feel, the greater your financial position feels. And the net position is, is an indicator of overall financial health. And as I mentioned in the previous chart, your net position grew from 258 million to 269 million on a government-wide basis and that consolidated presentation basis. And so, uh, your charts will show, you know, that, that your total assets were, they increased by nearly $42 million. We've given you, given you some descriptions in, in this chart of the things that caused, uh, some of those increases and some of those changes. And the, and the notes to the financial statements give you a lot of significant detail on those changes. So we jump to the next slide, uh, kind of concluding on, on the government-wide statements. And we looked at, we talked a little bit on the previous slide about total assets and the increase of nearly 42 million. And the other side of, of the statement net position are liabilities. And liabilities increased by about 31 million, nine and a half percent. There were some, there was some new debt issued, some certificates of obligation, about $23 million and a, and some tax notes of about a million dollars issued. That's part of the increase. Uh, and so, uh, there's also changes in your, in your net pension liability and your, and your, uh, post-employment benefit liability. That's essentially the liability for healthcare for employees that have retired. We've got some separate slides that talk about that. There are significant numbers. And so we prepared some separate information. Your next slide is a recap of, of the changes in long-term liability. We, we discussed in the previous slide that, that you had a, a tax note issued for about a million dollars. And you also had a certificates of obligation, nearly $23 million, uh, that were issued during the year. And those represent the additions to long-term debt in terms of borrowing. Other changes included, uh, the pension obligation and, and post-employment obligation. And then you also had your regular payments of, of principal on your notes, nearly $981,000 and another $13 million in payments on, on bonds payable. Your CAFER has some detailed amortization schedules on all of that long-term debt in both the notes to the financial statements and in supplemental schedules. So I encourage you to, to read through that information. The next page, that, that was a presentation on long-term liabilities for, for business-type, for governmental activities, which is, is your general fund and your primary governmental funds. Business-type activities also have, have some long-term debt. Those were, your primary business-type activities are gonna be, uh, the airport and transportation divisions. And, and there's some long-term debt there, some additions to debt, primarily part of the, uh, net pension liability. Uh, and so there's long-term debt in the business-type activities totaled about $10 million at the end of the fiscal period. And you can see note eight in the financial statements gives you detail on that long-term debt. And we talked about, uh, uh, net pension liability and we prepared a, a slide to discuss it a little bit. Uh, net pension liability is, is a fairly significant number for the city. And it's grown, uh, from 38 million to 62 million dollars. The city employees participate in, in the Texas municipal retirement system. And, and what this represents is, is, you know, defined benefit plan and the obligation, uh, at some point in the future, uh, to, to, uh, pay, uh, pension, uh, payments to, to your employees. There's, this standard was adopted, if we went back to one of the original charts on net position, around 2015 where GASB 68 was implemented and you implemented the, the requirement to, to record your net pension liability on the financial statements. It's a fairly significant number. And about two years ago, it was a similar balance of about, about, uh, 62 million dollars. The next slide is a recap also on post-employment benefits. And, and that post-employment benefits, again, simplistically is, you know, is healthcare premiums for retired employees. And that, that obligation is fairly significant, too. Uh, oh, it was about $61 million the year before. It changed by about $4 million, uh, during the, the, uh, current fiscal period. And it's presented on the face of the government-wide financial statements as part of your long-term obligations. Again, note 10 in the financial statements will give you a lot of information on both of those, uh, large liabilities. The next slide discusses a little bit further, gives you some narrative information about the change in net position. We'll, we'll see from the slide that, that total revenues on governmental activities increased by nine and a half million dollars. And part of that was, was surplus revenues, a transfer from, from the PB, over $900,000. And then a one-time payment of over $2 million for, for your share of the sale of the, of the, uh, Oclonian Power Plant, if that's the appropriate way to say that. Uh, but, but, uh, you had, you had a share of those proceeds and that's included in revenues and part of the increase in revenues. Property taxes increased, uh, by nearly 2%, mostly as a result of higher property values. And sales tax revenues increased 6%. And there was also a million-dollar contribution from your component units, uh, similar for debt service, similar to the prior year. Well, revenues increased by nearly nine and a half million dollars. Your expenses for governmental activities increased by Your expenses for governmental activities increased by three-point-two million dollars. So, that's what resulted in a net increase in overall net position. If we look to business-type activities, again, primarily your airport and transit system, those revenues increased by twelve million dollars. And a big part of that was Airport Improvement Program grant proceeds that were received and are part of the compliance audit that we prepared and issued in accordance with, along with the comprehensive annual financial report. So, Airport Improvement Program grants were very large. You also had a capital grant in the Public Transit Fund of one-point-seven million dollars. And there was a big increase in revenues in business-type activities. The next slide, you know, jumping off of the government-wide financial statements, which again is a consolidated presentation of all the assets and liabilities of the city. There's also some governmental fund financial statements. And the primary governmental fund that you focus on is your primary budgeted fund is going to be your general fund. Let's turn to the next slide. And to put some perspective into, you know, the job that the Finance Department has, the city maintains, you know, over twenty-three individual governmental funds. Each of those funds is like having a separate set of books that finance has to keep up with. And so, in the total fund balance of all these governmental funds, it actually dropped a little bit from sixty-two million to fifty-seven million. And the financial statements, and the fund-level financial statements give you a lot of detail on those changes. But your unassigned fund balance was about twenty-two million. Year before, it was about twenty-one million dollars this year. The decrease in overall fund balance of about five million dollars represents about an eight percent, eight percent decrease. If we turn to the next slide, you can see an historical recap of fund balances. And this is your general fund. This is a primary budgeted fund for the city in terms of operations. And you've got restricted, you know, committed and assigned funds in 2019, which were about ten million dollars, and unassigned funds of nearly twenty-four million dollars, a total of about thirty-five million dollars just for the general fund. So, the general fund actually increased from nearly thirty million to thirty-five million dollars in terms of fund balance. And if you turn to the next slide, it actually increased four-point-three million dollars, about thirteen percent. Those increases were primarily the result of sales tax increases of nearly six percent. The money that you received and transferred from the P B were about nine-hundred thousand, and the two-point-two million dollar transfer of your shares for the power plant sale, of your share of that sale. That represents a big part of the increase in the general fund. On the next slide, we have some discussion about the other governmental funds. And again, you know, the general fund is one of those twenty-three funds you have to account for. There's a significant other, number of other funds. And the fund balance of other governmental funds decreased by about nine million dollars. And part of that is decrease in community development fund balances and capital project fund balances. And then, there's also a 2019 CO fund that was represented bond proceeds or bond expenditures, expenditures on capital projects that will be financed with proceeds that you receive in the next fiscal year. So, that caused part of the decrease in fund balance in other governmental funds. So, that's a very, very quick and very summarized overview of the financial information. Doesn't do justice to the work that the Finance Department did in receiving that certificate of achievement. And again, the report's nearly three-hundred pages long with a lot of information in it. But also included in the CAFER, and equally as important, is the compliance section of the financial statements. And we've titled it, for lack of a better choice, Single Audit Section. And what the Single Audit Section includes is our test of compliance with your expenditures of federal award funds and state award funds. And so, excuse me, the Single Audit Section will reveal that you had nearly twenty-one million dollars in federal funds expended. And you also had, you know, over a million dollars in state funds expended. And we tested your compliance with the major programs of federal and state. For federal purposes, that was Community Development Block Grant and the Airport Improvement Program. If you remember, we saw, you know, over an eleven-million-dollar increase in AIP funds. And then your state program, largest state program requiring testing was Texas Auto Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority grant, which is one you have received historically in the past. So, although there's some compliance reports that are separately issued in the back of the CAFER, this is a summary of the results of those reports. And so, what they indicate is that, you know, again, the auditor's report, the opinion on the financial statement was unmodified, a clean opinion. That's what you'd expect as commissioners in the city of Brownsville and as management. There were reports issued on internal controls over financial reporting. And we did not identify any material weaknesses or other significant deficiencies in that financial reporting process, nor any non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. That's equally as important to you as the financial information. And what we found in our testing was your controls were in place and functioning. And we didn't identify non-compliance with some of the state regulations that would impact your financial information. And also, in addition to the controls over financial reporting, we tested and evaluated controls over your federal and state awards. And the report that's in the back of the CAFER that discusses that's, you know, similar to financial report, and indicated that we didn't identify any material weaknesses or any other issues of non-compliance. And our report on compliance was unmodified, like the report on the financial statements. And so, the federal awards are tested in accordance with what's referred to as Uniform Guidance, the Single Audit Standards. And the state awards are tested in accordance with the State of Texas Single Audit Circuit. And so, we followed those guidelines in evaluating your controls and your compliance requirements. And I think it's important to note, again, from a financial reporting perspective, your financial statements have historically received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And your compliance reports, you know, also had favorable outcome for U.S. Commissioners and for finance and administration. So, that's, again, a fast overview of, you know, what's a three-hundred-page report. And I believe there's, if you don't have the bound copy of the CAFER, finance has them, and everybody hopefully has their PDF copy that is available for your closer scrutiny. I'd be glad to address any questions between finance and myself and Zuzianis. You know, we'll do our best to address any questions. We did have a couple of advisory comments that we discussed with the Audit and Oversight Committee. They were very minor in nature. We discussed those with management. And you have appropriate corrective actions in place for those few comments that we did make.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay, this is an action item. Do you have any motions?
Acknowledge, and this is Nuryan.
We have a motion to acknowledge. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to ask Administration for a copy of Mr. Anderson's report, which is thirty-six pages. The one that was included in our packet was only twenty-two. So, if I could get a copy of Mr. Anderson's, I'd appreciate it.
I think Mayor, that thirty-six is probably just the way the City Secretary prepared the slide. But they do have a copy of our required communication. We certainly would have that available. Were you talking about the PowerPoint presentation itself?
The one you just presented, thirty-six pages. And the one that we had in our packet was twenty-two. And there were some things you presented in yours that were not in the one that we were given. So, I'd like to just have a copy of yours.
We'll make sure that I have that report. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm voting aye on that one, sorry.
Aye or nay, Commissioner?
That's aye.
Okay. So, those against? Motion passes? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have action item number five. Consideration and Action to Acknowledge the Greater Brussels Incendies Corporation, known as JIBIC, Report Regarding Emergency Assistance Efforts Provided to Business in Response to the COVID-19.
Good evening. This is Marilas. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. We were asked to present some activities around the COVID-19 assistance that JIBIC is about to engage in. And we have some slides here. Hopefully, you can see them to share as a visual. And hopefully, also, we exchanged some recommendations from the Commission. We had a board meeting, and the board approved one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to assist community needs during this pandemic. And you can see the next slide where these monies were to be split. The initial idea was when the federal government opened the CARE Act, we found from both BCIC, from the Chamber, and also from the, from other entities, that there was a lot of uncertainty from different businesses regarding what kind of assistance they were eligible for. So, the thought was, how can we hire some people to support the influx of calls from these different entities to support small businesses and other businesses, to guide them to the right locations and help them coordinate their financials so they can go into these application processes? So, the right picture, seventy-five thousand to hire personnel was approved. In that same item discussion during the JIBIC meeting, the recommendation was to double the amount and create a program where we could then augment the BCIC Startup Texas that Josh at BCIC presented to you in your last meeting. So, the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, again, is, part of it is to augment the BCIC program. And the other seventy-five thousand is to hire personnel. Before I go, can you go back to the slide, the slide prior? Any questions on this particular, this one was already approved? And I believe BCIC is about to have their board meeting to accept this particular seventy-five thousand to augment their program. And we're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce here with the other dollars to hire personnel to help with the process of supporting small businesses. Any questions?
Yes, I have a couple. So, the seventy-five thousand that your board approved for BCIC to help with the Startup Texas, were there any conditions placed on those funds?
We did not discuss any conditions, but we did discuss that once the board approved it, that we would join BCIC in how to approach the awarding of the dollars. So, to answer your question, no.
But did you place conditions yourself? And if you did, were you authorized by your board to do so?
Did not place any conditions, and none were discussed by the board either.
So, for the record, the seventy-five thousand is going to go to BCIC, for them to utilize as they need to for the Startup Texas. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question I have on the personnel is, how many personnel are contemplated with that seventy-five thousand? And is it just temporary employment that you're talking about?
Right. So, the initial, we allocated seventy-five thousand. And in the agreement, or in the discussion, was to first hire up to five temporary personnel through the Chamber. So, the Chamber would hire some personnel, train them, and they would be added to the pool of people that are entertaining these calls from small businesses to help businesses get directed to the right area. So, to answer your question, it's a temporary hire. And the first hire would be up to five people through the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. So, thank you very much for that conversation. Are you going to speak about any efforts you're doing with your current, I don't know how to term it, people that you're already working with?
Yes, sir.
Company or some of the other companies that you already established relationships with? Are you going to be covering that, or can you answer?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I do have other slides. This is just that one item, and I do have the other items to discuss.
Thank you very much.
If there are any other questions, we can go to the next slide. One of the proposed activities is, we learned that the Texas Workforce Commission has in place a shared work program. And the shared work program essentially allows a company to employ their personnel at part-time. And that employee is still eligible for unemployment. So, the strategy here is that, so then the employer doesn't have to lay off the employee. We can still retain them at a part-time, and that employee will still be eligible to apply for unemployment, therefore catching up on their income. And so, on the left, you'll see the Texas Workforce Commission icon and the name of the program. And to the right, it's just one example of a local manufacturer. This local manufacturer, to Commissioner Niese's point, is one of our contract partners. When I say contract partners, is JIBIC has a number of contracts already from years prior that we pay out annually based on their employment base. And this particular employer started the year with sixty employees at eighteen dollars an hour. They laid off twenty-one of them already. And they laid off, this particular employer laid off twenty-one because the lack of supplies from a global supply chain. This particular employer told me that they don't have parts coming in from Europe and from Mexico. So, even though, even they want to sustain their workforce, they can't because they don't have work to do because the supply chain is compromised. And they were about to either part-time five of them or lay off five more. So, in the purple text, you see that JIBIC can partner with this particular manufacturer and Workforce Commission to pay out the difference of the shared work. The math would be, if it's an eighteen-dollar-an-hour person, and they part-time them, then the understanding will be a nine-dollar-an-hour person. The math is about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month to retain this particular worker, times twenty-something. It's fairly inexpensive for us to engage in this kind of partnership. And we already started reaching out to some of these partners that Commissioner Ben Niese alluded to, to see if they're interested in this particular item. I think it's important as we start talking about a recovery strategy. As you know, if you have robot technicians, for example, or machine operators, and those are typically hard to find, and if we lay them off, and then we start off a recovery process in the next two weeks, and we can find them again because they're already hired by some other company, it's going to be very difficult to get these companies back up on their feet. And these are high-pay jobs. So, we are working with these partners to see if there's a way for that, to us to retain, help them retain them and partner with the Workforce Commission through the shared work program. This is one example. In alignment with this one, obviously, most of our agreements are performance agreements. I'll give you the example of CK Tech. Um, I'll give you the example of, of CK Technologies. Our, their performance agreements over three years to hire 300 people. And then if every year we audit them and if they met their performance agreement, that they hired people from Brownsville. We look at their addresses, that they hired people at the amount of pay that they agreed to, to, to pay. And they met particular numbers every year, that once we audit them and they meet the performance, then we pay them out. In the case of CK Technologies, they already met their performance for next year, they made it this year. So earlier uh in the year, the Jibic board decided just to go ahead and pay them out since they had already met their performance agreement. On the alternative, there's some other contractors or other companies, for example. Their performance agreement still goes up for a couple of years. And since they already laid off some people, it's obvious that they're not going to meet the performance agreement. So the likelihood is that they won't get paid out at the end of the year. So one of the conversations we're having is that money where they were supposed to pay them out anyway, let's use those dollars to help them retain these people instead of laying them off in partnership with the Workforce Commission in the shared program. So that's a, that's a variation of the shared work program they were considering in support of these partners that we already have a contract with. Uh, I think that answers your question, Commissioner Nees.
Yeah, that's, well, that does, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions from this one? I have another, I have a couple of more examples. Okay, next slide.
Mario, I forgot to ask you. So these are only, uh, these are proposals, you haven't actually made any contracts with any of the country companies yet to implement this, but this is your proposal.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this next one is the idea also that if, if uh some of these partners start, start creating their recovery strategy. Uh, we want to know from, we already started reaching out to them and asking them what, what their conditions are. Do you have enough PPE for your recovery window? Uh, and here's just some examples, right? And between from masks, gloves, goggles, what is it, what is it that they require? And, and uh, we're starting to put together a list of potential vendors. We'll reach out to the city and we'll reach out to the county to ask what vendors they have already looked at so that we can um, maybe even make a larger purchase, maybe the larger purchase might be even cheaper. So we can help these companies recover and, and put people back to work. We're also talking about potential uh ways of testing people. I know there's a temperature, uh, when people come in and check with the temperature, things like that. So we're talking to these partners, it's like, let's put together a, a recovery strategy, see what the cost is from a PPE perspective and see how we can uh, uh, help them out. Any questions on this one? Okay, next one. We also heard from a particular partner and I hate to highlight them, but, but it's a, it's important, it's Sata in this case. In talking to them, they told me that obviously their, their supply chain, some of it comes from Italy, some of it comes from Spain. And in asking them, how long does it take, once, once Spain and Italy gets online? And they start producing the parts that Brownsville needs, Sata Brownsville needs. Typically takes 30 to 60 days of supply chain. So having conversations with them and trying to find out, well, what would it cost? Instead of you put it in on ship, what would it cost if you put the inventory in air freight? So that we can cut the supply chain quicker, make it faster so that we can start employing people faster in the recovery window. So this is another strategy that directly fits the type A EDC and these type A partners in finding ways to mitigate the supply chain disruption uh by, by finding a faster way to get parts in so that we can run the, the businesses quicker and hire people faster. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Lozoya, what you're presenting though, they're just ideas, they're not actual proposals. I mean, you haven't actually uh allocated any funds or, or anything else. You're just proposing ideas, correct?
That's correct, sir, we have not allocated any funds. So I was asked by our board, once, once we, the first one I presented was already passed by the board. These other ones are ideas. The board asked me to come up with ideas that are relevant to a type A. These are ideas that we came up with, we already started calling partners to start gathering data in case uh partners do want to partner on this one. And once we do, we'll come back and present it to the board for uh, for funding and approval.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, but you're going to present it to your board for funding and approval. It's not, you're not asking us to approve these ideas, right?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay.
Do we need approval for the 75 to the Chamber of Commerce and the 75 to BCIC? Because we need to get it on the agenda as soon as possible if that's the case.
Yes, sir, that was already approved by the Jibic board and I believe the BCIC board is about to put on their agenda.
Mayor, do we, do we need to do an approval on that?
I think uh, i- if, I, I think it would be prudent to do that, Commissioner, just uh, if, but counsel, I'm not sure if the item is.
It's noticed for an action to acknowledge.
Right, right.
Yeah, for, for tonight, but once they're, the Jibic approved it or they're set to approve it. Then, as we always do with BCIC, we approve their, their plans and their, their appropriations. So let's make sure that we coordinate uh Mr. Bernal and Mr. Lozoya so that we can approve that as soon as possible so it can be implemented.
Yeah, we'll coordinate it.
If, the, the Jibic board already approved it, so if, if Mayor and, and Commission, I, I think it'd be great if you can go ahead and approve it now. Uh, BCIC is about to do it as well.
Well, uh, we can't just do that easy, Mr. Lozoya, it would have to be an agenda head-up. And that's why I was asking counsel whether, uh, counsel, if, if we acknowledge this report, which included the, the funding, um, as illustrated earlier, is that a ratification of that funding or do we have to take that up separately?
It needs to be noticed for an action item to approve the funding itself. And it can come right back on the very next agenda, but it would just.
Right, well, i- if it's your opinion then that, that um approving this doesn't ratify that funding, then let's go ahead and put that on the next agenda.
Okay, I, I agree with that.
Now, we just, as a suggestion, Mr. Lozoya, it would be amazing if we could see if any of the companies that currently are manufacturing, maybe could start manufacturing a PPE that's much needed in this area. Or if maybe um Jibic could try and bring a company that um might want to start making PPE for, for everybody.
Yes, ma'am. With that, Commissioner, is to ramp up a PPE facility is not probably going to be that quick. And then the need for PPE is being met now by other parts of the, of the state. I know the governor's ramped up PPE production and there are certain municipalities can request PPE. Um, I'm not sure if that's something that we can still do, but you may want to look at the feasibility of that, Mr. Lozoya.
Yes, sir.
Want to make sure that it's not something that if you were to incentivize a company for doing it, that it would I just wanted to make sure it matters and that it won't be kind of something that, that's already met by that time.
Yes, sir, understood.
Something, um, this is an earth, by the way, I can't see anyone's expressions, but um why isn't anyone bothered that we're five weeks into this and he's only now proposing ideas about what could happen? Um, whereas BCIC is already actually helping people. The options that have been proposed are also only um, are only helping entities that Jibic is already supposed to be affecting. As it is, the ones that are having the hardest time are the small businesses between three to 20 employees. I haven't heard any proposals to help the, uh, that size of a, of a, of a business. On top of that, $75,000 towards BCIC when, when BCIC has already put in 450. You all get the same amount of money. Why is it that you can't, um, now's the time when you really need to step up to the plate? I don't know, what, what are you saving the money for? Um, then, let me see, what other things? And then $75,000 to hire employees for the Chamber of Commerce? I mean, we need this money to be going out directly to the hiring other people. Those are my opinion, I'm like really disappointed with this presentation.
I would agree on the point of the amount that has been donated to BCIC. If there is no active plans that are funded, well, then at least that's a way to be able to assist uh the local businesses who are mostly.
What has Mr. Lozoya been doing these past five weeks? He's collecting a paycheck, but he hasn't really done anything to actually help out the community. That's, that's what really bothers me.
The issue that I'm having, uh, Mr. Lozoya, on some of this is when it comes to supply chain management, these companies that, that have been incentivized by Jibic. Um, I don't know how they haven't been able to solve the supply chain issues up till this point. Especially since they're getting incentivized. And like Commissioner Goloski says, we're five weeks into this pandemic at least. Italy's been in it longer, so has Spain and other parts of Europe. So I'm, I'm really, I'm not necessarily um liking the idea of incentivizing a company that couldn't manage its own supply chains. Uh, so, you know, I, I do have issues with that personally. Anybody else?
Yeah, it, it all comes down to our return on investment. You know, as to, every dollar we put in has to generate um, you know, money for our community and a return here, so I think whatever we do decide on, um, and I know we were, we're likely going to commit $150,000, but there needs to be some sort of um analysis done on what that, what the impact is here.
I, I agree with that and I also agree that um what was shown is companies that you've already, that you already work with as opposed to um those that have, that have not, that you have not. And I was also hoping to see um some innovation there.
Uh, yes, I understand, we made the, we made the request to the Governor's Office of Economic Development, along with the Attorney General for their consideration to find temporary flexibility or adjustment to the type A tax code. Uh, and they haven't found flexibility or they haven't allowed us to adjust from the type A tax code and these are the, these are the ones that are in alignment with the type A organization.
Who did you consult about the restrictions on the type A?
I mean, we had, we had a phone call with Adriana Cruz, who's the Governor's Director of Economic Development and Tourism.
And she told you that you could not use your revenues, your funds to help local businesses during this disaster?
We were asked to stay within the tax code.
What do you mean by that?
Well, the, the type A has a tax code parameter of business codes that provide direct jobs and so does a type B and uh.
Okay, but direct jobs to big companies or local companies?
I'm sorry, not direct jobs, primary jobs. And primary jobs are different than service industry, restaurant, or business. So those are not type A qualified.
So your position is that you can only work to help out industrial-sized economic development? You can't do anything on the local level?
The, what, we, we cannot, according to the code, and we're trying to find ways to fit our type A parameters to support those businesses. We're still.
Provide us with the code provisions that you're relying on so that we can analyze ourselves.
Mr. Lozoya, does uh, does that code require you to only work with the companies that you already have a relationship with?
No, we, we're, no, ma'am, we, we also have companies here that we don't have contracts with. Uh, and we're reaching out to them as well.
So then the second part of my question is, does the code require you to only work with big, big companies? Does it prohibit you from working with small companies?
No, there's some small manufacturers uh that fit the SBA, uh, SBA is under 500 employees. So there's a lot of those that are small.
I just find it in, you know, I, I'm not uh up on Texas economic modifications, let's say, in this pandemic. But it seems like if there was ever a time for innovation, it should be now and I, I find it hard to understand that the state of Texas would not, would not obtain that innovation.
Mr. Lozoya, what would happen, we're talking, you've presented um on some companies that obviously have incentive contracts with uh GB, you know, Jibic. So my question is, if, if these companies can't meet their obligations, then are they in default under the contract? And if so, what would the remedy be for Jibic?
Right, so depending on the, that's correct, sir, so they would be in default, they would not meet that year's performance. Some of them are multi-year performances. So that company would not get paid out uh that particular year.
Okay.
In this case.
So if that's the case, the board itself can adjust to compensate for that. I mean, they could have, adjust their performance metrics for this year or for the six months or the two quarters or whatever. I would think that your board can come in and innovate a little bit and uh, because these are contractual obligations, right?
Yes, sir, so we, we, we have put together a list of all these contracts that we have. And where are they in their performance? Obviously, some of them, at least two of them that I know of already are out of compliance. The rest are not, but then we would present that to the board.
The board can decide to obey the requirements or postpone them or
Yes.
eliminate them under the certain, right?
Correct. Yes, sir, that's correct.
I think what Dr. Dowd is getting is, is that we need to focus on our own local people right now. Unfortunately, I'm not trying to be regional or tribal or anything, but this is just a reality we're dealing with. So just please go back to your board.
Yes, Commissioner, correct.
For Renee, or probably Mayor Ann Renee. Um, do we have the authority to increase the 75,000 to a larger number? That would then be going, that could then go to BCIC for them to do what they um have the expertise or desire to do?
I think we could if, if the board, if the Jibic board approved that or requested that, possibly. Um, I don't know if we have the ability to just, you know, on our own, you know, out early divert some of those for an additional amount of funding that way, I don't know, counsel?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, uh, we, we have the final say-so to approve or not approve a specific, a specific project. I don't know that we can uh amend their projects. We can certainly approve or not approve the project.
I would think that we wouldn't have authority to increase it ourselves, but we can send Mr. Lozoya back to the board for a request for an increase, since we already know that BCIC is performing on a local level. But um I now doubt that we could ourselves increase it, although I would be tempted to do it.
That's my listen to Commissioner Nees, I mean, that's kind of my thoughts on it, I don't think we can, you know, out early do it. But I think if their board came to us with an additional request, we could, unless counsel has a different opinion.
Uh, again, yes, if they come up with it, we can approve it, however, we cannot change it.
Mayor, Mayor, I may.
Mayor, just a thought.
Mr. Lozoya. Yes, sir, I believe that the contract, and I have to double-check it, I don't remember the, this particular comment, but I believe the contract uh is open for extension. Um, and if not, we can definitely put that comment in there that to be, that it can be extended uh when money, if monies are expired.
Which contract, Mr. Lozoya, I'm sorry?
The agreement to pass on $75,000 to BCIC
Okay.
Uh, can, I, if it doesn't have the, the language, and I believe it does, but if it doesn't, we can easily, we can easily add the language stating that, that it can be extended or expanded. expanded.
Noel, Noel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Didn't I hear there was something innovative happening in Harlingen that their EDC type A is doing, but I can't remember specifically what it was.
Yes, I, I need to get more details. I know that Harlingen EDC is a type A, and they're creating a revolving loan fund to support retail. The other thing I would add, going back to the transferring, I, what I've seen happen in other communities also is since it is a component unit, GBIIC and BCIC, you can do inter-fund equity transfers or inter-fund loans at 10% interest. So GBIIC could inter-fund loan or transfer to BCIC, and BCIC having more flexibility as a 4B could then support and administer a lot of the programs that type A is limited by. That's another, in another community, you did that between general fund and the airport fund to do some capital projects as a matching. So you can do that type of inter-fund activity with the component.
Sounds great.
I would encourage that, Mr. Lozoya.
Me too.
Yeah, same here. What I'm seeing a lot is, I mean, we're, we, we know that businesses are having struggles all across the board. And what I'm seeing here so far is proposals to help the companies or the businesses that you've already helped in the past, which I understand. But what I prefer, what I'd like to see also is some sort of secondary proposals regarding how you can assist business overall and how you can kind of try and save some of these jobs overall. There's any sort of innovative ways to do that, whether that means, you know, possibly paying interest on short-term loans or, or helping companies with, with some sort of funding, anything else that, that would kind of bridge the gap, I think would be helpful. So I would suggest maybe coming up with some, some other ways to, to do something like that as well.
Especially, Mayor, especially since all the board has to do is waive the requirements that he's talking about for the non-performance on their, their contracts.
Right.
It's my recollection that GBIIC was very vital through the last recession that we had. That was, I guess it was what, 2009?
2008, 9, yeah.
Yeah, during that time, GBIIC was very vital to keeping a lot of local businesses open. They had a lot of programs where people could go and apply and, and, you know, get help with whatever, with their payroll. So it's, it's not, you know, you don't have to reinvent something. We've been here before, and we know it worked, and we know we were able to help people in the past. So it might even be going back and looking at some of those programs and seeing what was successful and what didn't work for us. But of course, we're not trying to bail out any multimillion dollar Titan tires here. We're trying to keep alive the mom and pop shops that have been invested in with blood, sweat, and tears. And I just would appreciate GBIIC looking at that and making sure that these businesses, you know, might not have gotten money from the PPP loan or whatever. We're here for them, and I would like to see GBIIC really work for them.
I'd like to ask that GBIIC work with the city and, and really do a review of what innovative things have been done in other EDCs and do that review very quickly. I like some of, a lot of the sound of what Noel was talking about Harlingen doing with retail. And in the past, GBIIC has not chosen to do much with retail, and yet we do have a lot of retail that's, that's going to be hurting if they're not already hurting. So I'd like to know what, what can be done other than what you proposed.
I agree, Dr. Dowell, because of the sales tax aspect of this.
Just a thought, I, I, I agree with that as well. As we discussed in the report, the commission has 52% of our sales tax in retail. So that is basically what feeds GBIIC, and if we can't find a way to continue to provide that funding stream, which is what is the livelihood, that's the lifeblood of both A and B, I, I think we, we should hook that, that 52%, and we'd be happy to work with Mario on some suggestions on how we can tackle this issue.
Mr. Lozoya, is, we got to making a lot of suggestions there. Do you have any more presentation to go? I'm sorry.
That's right, that was it.
Okay.
I have one more comment, Mayor. You know, there's a, there's another $450 billion that's going to come through the PPP program in the near future. And I know a lot of local businesses were in the first round. I don't know how GBIIC can play a role in being, being an advocate for these local businesses with our community banks, because they, in my opinion, the community banks were more successful down here in getting funding for their clients. So I know that there's a, there's a balance between the, you know, the business banker relationship, but I don't know how GBIIC can play a stronger role in, in bridging that gap and getting more money to our community.
And I would just remind you, Mr. Lozoya, I agree with everything Commissioner Cowan just said. I would just remind you that now more than ever, GBIIC is going to play an intricate role in bridging our retail, our industrial, everything, more than ever, because we're about to see people start closing their doors, and we need to do everything within our power to make sure that that money stays here in Brownsville. Those are my two cents.
Mr. Lozoya, thanks for your presentation. Sounds like you've got some homework to do, but I know you've got a good board that can help, and the city administration is definitely willing to help out. Thanks for your time. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I would like to add one last thing. I'd like to challenge the board to actually get involved in the process and have higher expectations of what you all, what your organization can do. Because if this was really what you thought was adequate, and it's only because Ben and I requested that it be on the agenda, then that's really pathetic, because it's a waste of sales tax money that has gone to GBIIC. Now is the time to step up and do the best that you can do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Lozoya, thank you.
Thank you.
This is an action item to acknowledge the report. Do I have any motions?
I'll make the motion to acknowledge.
We have a motion to acknowledge. I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed?
Probably because I'm really disappointed with the quality of work.
Say, we have one, one opposed. Motion to acknowledge passes. Thank you.
Next agenda item, action item number six, consideration and action to authorize resolution number 2020-030 for the filing of the fiscal year 2020 coronavirus A, relieve an economic security act, which is the CARES Act grant application in the amount of $7,599,697 with the federal transadministration and operating administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53, Title 23, United States Code.
I don't think this needs much discussion. I'm going to move to approve this grant application.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next, we have a board appointment, item number seven, consideration and action to appoint members, a member to the LDTQ task force.
Is this one of the reserved appointments or is this open?
I don't know if to thank him or not thank him.
No, I mean, there is no one. Well, there was.
Somebody, somebody's microphone's open.
Is this a reserved appointment or is this one that's open?
No, sir. This is one that Commissioner Mungia needed to make.
Commissioner Mungia, do you have an appointment?
If he doesn't, I have one.
I'm trying to see if he's still on the meeting. Commissioner Mungia, you're there?
So how many spots are there in all?
Should be seven.
So does that mean every commissioner gets one or?
Well, that was the idea behind it, but it's been, what about, we did this in person last time, so it's been about a month and a half.
Rather, when I'll move for Robert White's advantage.
This is the city secretary. Commissioner Mungia just announced that his audio is not working, but his appointment would be to appoint a Mr. Roy de los Santos.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Mungia made a motion through city secretary for Roy de los Santos, and we have a second. Commissioner Tetro?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is executive session, letter A, consultation with attorney to receive confidential legal advice pursuant to section 551.0712 of the Texas government code in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board under the City of Brownsville Charter, articles 1, 2, 5, and 6, and it is the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas District and Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Attorney Complex with this chapter. We can have the motion to go into executive session.
I'll move to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do we have to go to another link? Are you going to explain people or how this is going to work?
Commissioner, we should have gotten another link in our email. There should be a separate one. I saw it earlier today. Yes, there's a, an executive session link. It was sent to 321.
So we leave this meeting and then go into the other one, right?
Is that correct?
You don't need to leave the meeting. You can just put it on mute so that you can call in to the link that we sent.
Okay. But that's going to open another WebEx, so we might get knocked off. We'll see how it works.
Yeah, I'm going to exit out of mine and go into that one and then come back to this one.
I'm going to do the same.
It may be better to exit just to ensure that you're on mute.
Right.
I don't want to get in trouble.
Back from executive session.
Well, do, but do we have everybody?
I, I can take roll call.
Yeah, please.
Mayor Mendez?
Here.
Commissioner Cowan?
Present.
Commissioner Gowin?
Present.
Commissioner Goloski Pisanya? She's not back on there yet. Commissioner Tetro?
I'm here.
Commissioner Mungia?
I don't think he's on yet either. I see that Commissioner Goloski is there, but.
Yeah, she's on there.
Okay.
Do we have a call correct, Mayor?
Commissioner Goloski?
I don't see anyone, but I, I hear you all.
Okay, we see enough.
And Commissioner Neese?
I'm here.
The only one that I don't see is Commissioner Mungia.
Okay. Well, this is, this shouldn't take long anyway, so let's go ahead and reconvene.
Okay. It is now 7:49. We're back from executive session, and the next agenda item is possible action on any items as discussed in executive session. At this time, we do not have any items listed, so we can adjourn the meeting.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.
Stay safe.
Thank you.